I think everybody's back. It looks like we're good to go. So we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Paco, can you take the votes, please?
Laura Wiskey.
Here.
Tom Hagen.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Lynn Grassi.
Here.
Ms. Harden.
Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, our nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested committee members to Snipes Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting school district business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. We have a motion to approve minutes for January 27, 2022, board meeting. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Can you follow up?
Tom Hagen.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Lynn Grassi.
Aye.
Laura Wiskey.
Aye.
Motion carried. Special reports?
We have one actually planned for exchange students to resign since we moved the meeting. We push it back to March 11.
That's always a fun one. That's always a fun one. Discussion of old business? Right, any new business? So Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. For the Superintendent's Business Advisory Report, there was a meeting of the Business Advisory Committee. They actually had a chance to meet with the side leadership team and speak with the students and give some hopeful ideas on career development, how to network, how to promote themselves. It was just really an open discussion among the Business Advisory Council. I was able to attend. It was really interesting to see what the students were thinking about or some of the questions that they had as they spoke to the different community members. The next one is Curriculum Programming Committee and Alumni Association. Mr. Fishel?
Met with the Alumni Association and they need to get a PayPal account set up because they're still collecting cash and checks. And so I talked with Treasurer Placo and he looked into it and said doesn't know if that can go through the school. So I've informed the association they need to set up their own PayPal account and hopefully that will be done soon. And what that'll do is that'll allow anyone who is going to make a donation can do that through PayPal online and they won't have to have a one-on-one meeting to collect $25. So anyway, also, they are looking for a lot more members. Alumni, join up and we'll talk about that more in the future. Okay, so on Sunday, March 13th, there is a St. Patrick's Day parade and they're looking to walk in that parade. It starts at the fairgrounds and ends at Hell Regals and it starts at 3 o'clock. And they're asking that if anyone from Riverside wants to walk in that, to meet at the fairgrounds at 2 o'clock. That's Sunday, March 13th. Fundraisers at Party in the Park, July 1st through the 3rd, so they're planning that. They're also planning a duck race and everyone's seen the little duckies that are at the fairs that go through the water, right? So they go down to the Grand River down by Helen Hayes at Wyman Park and they do that down there and it's going to be a 50-50 raffle and it's going to be connected with Harvey High School. And they said it's been successful in the past and right now that is scheduled for Saturday, October 1st. They do have a golf outing that they're looking to plan and that will also be with Harvey High School and that date is yet to be determined. So that is the alumni. On the curriculum, we did not have a meeting, but there's a couple of things that I would like to present today. And also, let's go back to the alumni. There's a scholarship program from the Men of Honor. Some of these guys are here today. And the Men of Honor Social Club is looking to assist young men in their pursuit of higher learning, be that in a university or a technical or trade school setting. Applicants should fill out the attached scholarship application form, which I will give and get to the school and have it signed by their guidance counselor. Special consideration will be given to those young men raised in a single-parent household and those facing financial hurdles. Other considerations include past school performance, awards and achievements, extracurricular activities, volunteerism and community service, and membership in groups and organizations. And so the amount tentatively is $3,000 and there may be further discussion on that, but right now that's the Men of Honor Scholarship Program. Coming back to the SEL program that was brought into Riverside, I'm going to read part of an article and actually part of two articles. Social Emotional Learning CELL is in government schools and education circles today, but its origins in the occult have been largely obscured so far. The truth was hiding in plain sight all along. The Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning, CASL, the parent company that sold Riverside the Responsive Classroom Program. One of about, one of the leading outfits promoting CELL reveals a great deal about the nature of CELL on its website. According to the history of CELL offered by CASL, even the very term "social emotional learning" was developed during a meeting held at the Fetzer Institute. No further details are provided on CASL's website about this, however. Even a brief amount of research shows the mention of Fetzer Institute is just the tip of a massive iceberg. Indeed, the New Age Institute boldly proclaims that its primary mission is spiritual, supposedly aimed at helping build a new spiritual foundation for a loving world. This spiritual foundation, though, is not Christian or anything remotely compatible with Christianity or Judeo-Christian principles. Rather, it is based on the occult, New Age teachings of individuals such as Lucifer Publishing Company founder Alice Bailey, self-proclaimed herald of world teacher Benjamin Krem and other gurus. The Fetzer organization keeps a relatively low profile, but author Brian Wilson blew the lid off Fetzer in his agenda in the book John E. Fetzer and the Quest for the New Age. Wilson showed Fetzer was such a zealous disciple of Bailey, who claimed to receive special revelations from spirits, known as ascended masters. These are dead people, as she says, communicate with her. Then he would host sessions at the institute where Bailey's great invocation would be recited. Bailey long expressed a special interest in the education of children. In her book, Education in the New Age, Bailey's supposed ascended masters revealed that the coming world government she predicted would synthesize Marxism with neo-scholasticism through a process achieved using the education methods pioneered by socialist John Dewey, the founding father of progressive education. Plenty of powerful individuals and organizations aside from CELL procurers have seized on these ideas. United Nations Assistant Secretary General Robert Mueller, not the Robert Mueller in the investigations, even based his world core curriculum on the teachings of Bailey and her ascended masters. He admitted in the foreword to the curriculum's teacher's manual. Values being taught using CELL are very much in line with Bailey, Mueller, and other procurers of New Age progressive views. Everything from globalism and social justice are being marketed to children under the guise of CELL, as its promoters openly admit. After an initial response from CASL offering to make somebody available for an interview, neither the Fetzer Institute nor CASL responded to multiple requests for comment. So that's one article. And this one is...
Excuse me, I guess I want to understand, was this part of the committee meeting? Or was there not a committee?
Well, there wasn't a committee meeting.
Okay, so I guess at this point in our agenda, it's really about reporting what was discussed in the committee meeting for everybody to understand and make sure...
Yeah, I'm just bringing curriculum information because this is what we're now teaching in the school in our district.
Mr. Fishel, what article is that?
I can get that to you because I don't have it written on here. I typed it out in double space so it's easier to read. So I'll get that to you. And this is just an update on CELL with Ohio Value voters. Calls on the Ohio State Board of Education to immediately rescind their strategic plan that includes CELL as one of their four learning domains. Based on evidence provided by Protect Ohio Children Coalition, Ohio's education system is putting families in danger by promoting CELL frameworks and programs. So it undermines parental rights. So the CELL program, part of our curriculum, and that's what I'm talking about, it's part of our curriculum, may instruct children they have rights to confidentiality and privacy from their parents and not tell their parents what they are being taught about in school. Promotes data collection. And I don't know if we've gotten to data collection here. I don't think so yet, but this is part of their whole program. Government databases are collecting data on students to follow them for life to measure outcomes for the working classes of society and the collective good. Parents have not consented to this data collection and many responses are private information best suited between a counselor and a patient. Phone apps, among others, are also being used for students to provide data. Impersonates mental health services, and I have brought this up in a curriculum meeting that we had when I did a presentation. Many CELL programs are designed to shape the child's developing brain to accept particular worldview views regarding sexuality, racial attitudes, and other social issues under the guise of providing a mental health benefit. Promotes psychological evaluations by unqualified teachers. Interventions may be prescribed by a teacher with limited training that may adversely impact a student's permanent data file. Lack of education resources can mean that their evaluations are administered by untrained or poorly trained personnel. And what I said here was, I'm sure all the teachers aren't psychologists. Involves problematic privacy policies. May disclose student data that could be used against parents in regards to the personal choices they make for their children. If situations are detected regarding gender, sexual orientation, or other sexual rights violations, this could become a window for family disruption or even separation. It promotes activism and allegiance and division. CELL is promoted as the lever for equity and social justice. Critical race theory and Marxist lessons are taught regarding oppression, oppressors, intersectionality, race, gender, and religion in ways that promote illegal sectarian concepts. Community organizing events and after-school programs are routinely promoted. So I can forward these articles to you, Jim, so you can know where they came from. And that's all I have.
Buildings and Ground Operations Committee and Legislative Liaison.
Sure. We had a meeting on February 8th. And I think that the main thing to come out of that meeting was there's been discussion about taking the building, the residential unit that we bought next door to the band field. We talked about converting that into space for the maintenance department. We talked about this several months ago, that, you know, probably in the second half of 2021. At that point, my personal opinion is we either need to occupy it or we need to raise it. We cannot leave it vacant. So the idea is to bring the maintenance department together in one location. It will add for better coordination among the different employees of the maintenance department and it will allow for more effective coordination and frankly execution of what needs to be done in the schools. Initially, it was the cost to make it usable in that format was about $74,000, but since then, we were able to make some changes and it's about $57,000 is what it would cost. And that's actually part of the Buildings and Grounds' agenda today is to approve that. I believe that it is in our best interest to utilize the building that's there. I'm not sure that any of the $57,000, if it should be, need to be raised if the levy should pass, but I think that the advantage of having the maintenance department together is very useful. One other thing that would be part of this is there's a, right now, we utilize the, underneath the stands for storage. So part of this effort would be to also build a steel building, which would take about 14 spots in the overflow parking. That building would not be permanent because we don't know exactly, again, if the levy should pass. We don't know where buildings would be built, so that building is, could be disassembled and put elsewhere. There's nothing permanent about it. And so that would not, you know, except for the disassembly, there would be nothing lost.
And that's underneath the home bleachers?
Yes. So that, so we'd clean up the stadium and make it, it would be enclosed so the materials there would be better preserved and what have you. One thing that we often have, and I'll just keep this short. We have had a fair amount of snow this year and remarkably for a change. I think the snowplow contract has worked out pretty well. So that is a few fewer things keeping people up at night. Let me see if there's anything else. We covered a whole lot of different things. But I think those are the major items. Mrs. Grassi, you were there as well.
The fact that the building would be movable is a benefit to us just because, and if the levy passes, we can take that outbuilding and move it somewhere else and it would still be usable. I did want to touch on the water leak that we had in John R. If you could, Mr. Wiskey, if you could please at least briefly touch on that because we had gotten some water bills. I thought, to me, that was, that was an important item that we had covered in that meeting.
I received a phone call from the Painesville Utility Department. They were informing me that we were going to receive a rather large water bill and they had noticed excessive water use through Riverside and 585 Riverside Drive for over three and a half months. We were not aware in my department of any complaints or notifications that we were not receiving water anywhere in the building. Upon getting the phone call, I summoned several of the maintenance individuals. We did an investigation and it turns out that in the crawl space, underneath the John R first floor, the three-inch main water line that feeds the John R side of the building, four of its mooring wires had broken. When the three-inch water line dropped a good foot, it snapped a 3/4-inch water line that was feeding one of the hallways for the school. It was apparent that this water line, according to the timeline that the water department gave us, was running for a good three to three and a half months. The water was not going into the sewer. It was actually going into the dirt floor and gravel floor that is underneath the first floor of John R. We shut the main valve off. We propressed on a 3/4-inch shut-off valve to stop the leak. And the next day, we went back under and we reattached the water line that had broken when the main line had dropped. The main line has now been supported. Everything is functioning. I did call the water department to let them know we had found out what the issue was. They are aware of it and they are passing along that information to the sewer department to let them know that we should not get a sewer bill for that. And we have not heard any information since that point.
And just to be clear, as you had described the meeting, the water was going down underneath the building, but it was draining into the earth.
That is correct.
It wasn't like you had a sewer.
We had no tunneling outside the building. There was no tunneling underneath the building when we were crawling underneath there. And the crawl space is about a 24- to 26-inch crawl space that is dirt and gravel debris.
And there was no water pressure issues or anything?
No, no, because the main line was still intact.
Okay.
It was just that one line that was feeding a couple areas that were more so the janitorial closet side.
And I just thought it was, I just thought it was an interesting, an interesting thing that had come up that, you know, goes to show that we have things that are going on in our buildings that we can't see anymore that have an effect on, you know, could have an effect on the usability of our facilities. I just thought it was an important item. Thank you.
Did receive, the water bill was $20,000. It was like $19,000 and change. And they did send a letter with it. So they have a review committee process. Our letters then explain the situation with help reach and just ask them for if there's any relief that they can provide. They have a program that's in place. So I sent that letter out last week, so we're waiting to hear back tonight. We need credit back to us.
What's it difficult with?
Lower than that, but I don't have an exact number. You know, much lower.
Okay. And there's some other things that we had talked about with regard to custodial support and other things, but I think there's still being, there's still a discussion. So that's all I have.
Next would be Policy Committee and Booster Organization. Ms. Harden is not here. I don't know, Mr. Hagen, did you have anything from the Policy Committee perspective?
We have got that.
Okay.
Zoe should be ready, probably September 11.
I know that Ms. Harden did meet with the RPTA, but I didn't get any update from her, so I have nothing to report there.
I wish I had. The RPTA is going to host their annual Easter egg hunt for the first time. I mean, it was an annual and then it got canceled in 2020 and 2021. So August, not August, April 9th will be the RPTA Easter egg hunt here on the front lawn of Riverside Camp. It's at 2 o'clock.
I think it always snows that day, so we're ready for plow.
You're not lying.
I hope not. I think the last one we had was actually decent weather, so we can keep our bridges crossed. All right. Next is the Superintendent's Report.
I think we need to go over our first again. As far as I look, we have, we had 802 COVID cases reported to us. The numbers are, that are below reflect how many COVID cases were in each of our schools. Last positive case that we received, notice was February 15th. If you can see, the week of February 21st is a four-day review of President's Day. We had absolutely no reports of any COVID cases. So far, right bar, it's not even there because it's a zero. This is an interesting slide. These are all the districts in Lake County ranked in terms of the percent of COVID cases as it relates to student population or student enrollment. As you can see, we're the third lowest at 15.6 of our population. Painesville, I still believe, have masks, but I think they have something going on where if you, if they have five or less confirmed cases per week for three weeks straight, they might ease off of the mask. And as you can see on the very bottom there, Kirkland Manor, Wickliffe, and Willoughby Eastlake removed their mask mandates this month. So overall, this reflects the whole season, the whole school year. And again, they're only much lower than us for Wickliff and Painesville City. These are the number of quarantines. We've had one quarantine. It was a student that wasn't feeling well that tested negative, but his parent, one of his parents tested positive. So that's why we have one in Week 27. That was a self-quarantine. And as most people know probably in this room, that the CDC rescinded their order that people were required to wear masks on public transit. They rescinded that order on February 25th. So we put out notice to our parents on Saturday, February 26th, letting them know that it was not required anymore to wear a mask. They still can if they want. Bus drivers don't need to wear them. I don't think I saw any bus drivers wearing them today. But it was for effective today, which was Monday, February 28th. Strategic plan update. We're still working very hard getting this thing done. February 11th, we had a board work session to discuss the strategic plan, as the board knows. The four target areas that we're working with are teaching and learning, safety, climate and wellness, fiscal responsibility, and advocacy, partnership, and engagement. February 23rd, the Central Office of Building Leadership met to develop priorities and action steps. And on March 17th, we'll meet with the strategic plan facilitators to finalize the plan so we can roll it out and hand to the Board of Education for possible approval on March 31st. This is a draft of our calendar for next year. It's not official, obviously, until the board says it is. What I want to point out, everything is pretty traditional here. And in the past few years, we've always said that we were going to have spring break, the last full week of March, regardless of where Easter fell. And that's what we have here, but as you can see, Good Friday is on April 7th and Holy Monday is the 10th. And school districts are still doing this spring break in the March, last week of March. I thought that was the only thing that was kind of odd is the fact that we would have spring break, then we would go back four days and then we would have Good Friday off and Holy Monday. So this is what we're presenting to the board, is some districts are still sticking to this. But I didn't know whether or not the board would have any feelings about coming back for four days and then having Good Friday off. We always tell our parents that it's last week in March. We didn't want to necessarily deviate from it.
What's your preference?
I would keep it just because we always say it's the last week of March. You know, coming back for four days, I'm not, you know, I'm not real thrilled about it, but it just happens to fall that way. Think about it, let me know. I would like to have it on the board agenda for the 31st, if all possible.
And this has schools starting on August 25th? Maybe you know?
Oh, no, yeah, for the kids it'll be the 25th. I know in past boards, I know, obviously, Mr. Fishel's new here, but past boards, they always want to start a little bit later. A lot of other school districts are starting the week of 15th. We're going to start on the 25th. Three days later, a week behind with a lot of districts. We have two weeks of break in December and the kids' last day would be June 2nd. So we're not going too far into June.
When does kindergarten start?
Kindergarten.
The 30th?
It typically is...
I think it doesn't.
No, we haven't filled those dates in yet, but it's typically like three or four days after the first day of school.
First day for kids.
I'm sorry, first day for kids, yes.
Yeah, 1 through 12.
Yeah, just, I can send it to you via email if you take a look at it. Two other things. I have Mrs. Aliff, so there you go. Mrs. Aliff wants to give a quick report of a project she initiated out of her office.
So I will hand out, we were able to publish a Riverside Local School District Service Recognition and this includes all of our staff, all 534, 35, depending what date you're counting. But this was put out several weeks ago. Still working on making some minor updates. Collect, the information was collected from payroll reports going into people's files if they had any breaks in service, started as a substitute. So again, we just wanted to do as best as we could to get it out there where all of our current employees stand with their years of service. We hope to publish it publicly. We're looking at kind of a light version of it because it is pretty hefty and it includes all of our staff and their work locations. So slimming it down for the public to share has also been suggested. And I did work with one of our T-Soul teachers at Buckeye, Teresa Kerboff. We worked on it for about three months to pull it together. Still getting some feedback, but we also met with our union representative and we're happy to see it and kind of got the ball rolling on what comes next.
It's amazing how many people we have here that have been here like 25 or more years. It's pretty cool.
Thank you.
There's been a lot of discussion in the last couple of board meetings about what kind of mental health services we try to provide in our district. Like Mr. Fishel said, inasmuch as we try to do what we can as educators, we're not experts in that area. We don't claim to be. But we do contract with some professional organizations out there that help us provide some mental health services to our students. And I thought it would be a good time to at least present what we offer to our students. And I have, I have Mrs. Leighton to present this.
So I would like to go into a little bit of, I'm going to start with a little bit of background with regards to mental health services. I'm sure many of you, you're not able to watch TV or read the newspaper without seeing the impact that we are facing today with mental health across our student population, both statewide and nationally. Just a little bit in terms of what... Just a little bit in terms of what mental health is. It refers to the emotional, psychological, and social well-being of an individual. It includes the individual's ability to navigate through life's challenges, develop positive relationships, adapt to changes, and utilize coping mechanisms along the way. What we know about the development of mental health in youth and adolescents, we know that childhood and adolescence are critical stages for the development of mental health. We know that there's rapid growth and brain development that occur during this time period. And negative experiences and traumatic events during youth and adolescence can significantly impact a student's mental health. The consequences of not addressing mental health issues in youth and adolescents can have lasting impact across, into adulthood. You can spend a lifetime trying to forget a few minutes of your childhood and the types of traumatic events that we're seeing and dealing with nowadays include, oh, I'm sorry. Include physical, sexual, or psychological abuse, natural and technical disasters such as hurricanes, terrorism, and COVID, domestic violence, community violence, the death of a close friend or relative, war and military-related situations such as deployment or injury, serious accident or illnesses, divorce, bullying, discrimination, and homelessness. All these types of traumatic events can lead to trauma-related stress in youth and adolescents. Quick story, when I actually first graduated from college, I was a school psychologist. And of course, you graduate and at a, you're energetic and want to basically save the world. And I really wanted to work with children, which is why I went into the field to begin with. And one of the first students that I began counseling in an elementary school, I was down in Cincinnati at the time, was a fourth-grade student who had significant behavioral problems and not producing in the classroom academically, was not being successful. And he was a student who, during first grade, had come home after school to find his mom who had committed suicide. And so this is the impact that he had in the school environment, and he was trying to really deal with this horrible experience and the loss of his mother. And I quickly realized at that time I wasn't saving the world. But to make the difference in a student's life and to try to help him cope with this traumatic event and provide resources and assistance to him, and even today, I obviously still think about him and wonder, of course, he'd be, you know, graduated by now, so really was an eye-opening experience for me. And then the impact of trauma in youth includes anxiety, depression, low self-esteem and self-confidence, behavioral difficulties, substance abuse, and suicide. So prevalence rate of mental health disorders in youth, so prior to the COVID- nineteen pandemic, and I know we've even talked about this in some previous board meetings and some of our committee meetings, we were seeing an increase already across the board in our student population and a lot of mental health disorders. Anxiety and depression were probably the two most significant areas that we were seeing an increase in our adolescents and our high school students. So prior to COVID- nineteen pandemic, approximately twenty percent of children ages three to seventeen in the United States had a mental, emotional, or developmental or behavioral disorder. From two thousand and nine to two thousand and nineteen, the number of high school students who reported persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness was more than one in three students. This is an increase of forty percent. Suicide behavior also increased with nineteen percent seriously considering attempting suicide and approximately sixteen percent making a suicide plan. This was an increase of forty-four percent. Then between two thousand and seven and two thousand and eighteen, suicide rates increased by fifty-seven percent in youth ages ten to twenty-four. There were more than six thousand six hundred suicide deaths in two thousand and twenty-two in this age group. The pandemic has further impacted the mental health challenges facing youth and adolescents. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, experts in pediatric health did declare a national emergency in child and adolescent mental health.
If you should go back to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You meant two thousand and twenty, I think, right? Or is it twenty-two, in this age group?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I say twenty-two?
Yeah.
I meant twenty-one.
We don't have that data.
No, correct, right, correct. It was twenty-one. So who's providing services in the Riverside School District? We currently contract with two mental health agencies. I believe we began our contract or partnership with Crossroads Health about four years ago. And then we actually added on this year. Now we have Signature Health that is providing services to students in the district as well. Crossroads currently provides us with five counselors across the district or qualified mental health specialists. And Signature Health provides us with two counselors to work with our at-risk high school students and students with significant social, emotional, and behavioral disabilities. During the twenty-twenty and the, during the twenty-twenty, twenty-one school year, Crossroads provided the following services. Individual and a group counseling to approximately two hundred and fifty students in grades kindergarten through twelfth grade. And then a hundred and forty-five plus hours of prevention training and assistance to staff. And I just would like to note that students are identified for mental health services through a referral process, either by parent referral or student, I'm sorry, or Riverside staff referral, or as part of the IET process for students with disabilities. And then how services are funded, so mental health services. In fiscal years twenty and twenty-one, the district receives student wellness funding through the Ohio Department of Education, through the Student Wellness and Success Fund. And then in fiscal years twenty and twenty-two and twenty-three, the district will receive funding from the following sources. The Disadvantaged Peoples Impact Act, which we will be receiving ninety-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-nine cents. And then the base cost student wellness and success component, which will receive two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Are there any questions about any services that we provide within the district?
Next is the Treasury Report and Committee Update. So Finance and Audit and Personnel Committee and Strategic Plan. This is Grassi.
So I'm just gonna touch on the strategic plan. Dr. Kayla said, just gave us an update on what's going on here. I have an update from Patty Coslow, who's chairing or, you know, facilitating the plan development. And she just indicated that things were going well and that after the central administration has their meetings with their administration teams, they're gonna be starting to draft the goals. They have some meeting time set aside for that. And then we should get that plan in completion for our March thirty-first board meeting. You know, based on the information that was provided to us by our central administrative team at our work session on the eleventh, it sounds like it's gonna be a really, you know, addition to our district, so I'd be happy to see that. So we'll see more of that at our next full board meeting. We had a Personnel and Finance Committee meeting on February seventeenth at eight-thirty. We had a number of agenda items. We covered all the things that are in our finance and personnel agenda here. We, one of the things that we did talk about at length, two things, was we have an Item B on our finance agenda is the permanent appropriations. Revision of those permanent appropriations because we got additional funding, so every time we do that, we have to, you know, re-appropriate our permanent appropriations so that we can actually spend the dollars that we get granted to us. So that's what that's for, if anybody has a question on that. And we also talked about the new funding formula and that there's not really any material changes or updates at this time. Mr. Flacco and I are attending a workshop tomorrow. It's not really a workshop. It's a, it's a discussion-based forum for the new funding formula where you can actually provide some input to the people that are, after the first couple payments that we've received, some conversation on that, so that will be interesting. We discussed in brief about the difficulty of finding tech support for our, you know, tech department and that it's becoming increasingly difficult to find individuals to fill those positions. So we talked about that. And other than that, that about wraps up my summary for that meeting.
Mr. Flacco?
All right, I have a short update tonight. We are out to bid right now for the employer replacement project that was moved to middle school. I mean, you know, the middle school will remain regardless of the results of the May levy. The bid opening date is March fourteenth, that means at one P M. So at that point, we will open bids and see what that project is and hopefully on March thirty-first approve or renew contracts with the most. An update on the cell tower. You know, a few years ago, we erected the cell tower up there. From equipment fund that the proceeds from the cell tower go there for turf replacement. It's a rising cell tower. Well, American Tower has now added AT&T to that tower, so we will get an extra three hundred dollars a month through that. And so we currently have eighty-two thousand dollars in that turf replacement fund. And we'll collect about twenty-three thousand, four hundred dollars a year, each year from that cell tower.
Just so the board knows too, when we originally erected that, that was the whole purpose of putting it up way in the back there. That land is really no use because it's so close to the area. But I understand that once you, when we put the turf in, it was, everything was out the door, it was like eight hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars. To replace it, if you already have turf in and you replaced turf, you're looking at north of four hundred and some thousand dollars. So our whole purpose with that field was to allow not only school-sponsored events on it, but since we believe it is a community field, we let all the youth programs that aren't really school-sponsored, but our feeder groups, to use it. The average life of the field in certain circumstances is ten to twelve years. Since we have all this youth side, we're thinking probably eight to ten. By that time, we'll hopefully have enough money not to have to dip into any type of PI levy to have it replaced.
And the last thing I just wanted to point out, this is a little confusing on the agenda, under the building and ground section. Item A is to purchase three school buses. Do Ohio schools council now for purchasing bidding process? And that's using the State of Ohio grant that we talked about last month, the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar grant that go towards the purchase of those buses. The second resolution is to go out and bid for three more buses, plus five special needs buses. And that is, we talked about the U S D P A grant that hasn't been officially awarded yet, that's coming sixty thousand dollars. So we're gonna go back out and bid again because Ohio schools council does it twice a year, and that time is just kind of lapsed. So we'll go out and bid for the additional three buses and then hopefully purchase three more when we get awarded the U S D P A grant. And the special needs buses, we went out to bid in the fall. We were looking at possibly using American Rescue Plan, I D A funds for that. We're still looking into that, so we figured we'd just go out and rebid it again. Just because we go out and bids doesn't mean we actually make any purchases and there's no cost to that program. So we can just go out and bid and, you know, make a decision later. If we want to pursue that or not, once we get all our ducks in a row, make sure that we can do over time. So that's why it's a little confusing to see. We're buying three buses, but then have to bid for three. It's kind of what I'm declaring.
And then the plan to kind of move buses through and buy new buses, we're in a really good place then, based on some of the grants and the purchase of new buses, correct?
Yes, yes. We're trying to buy five a year, like a ten-year lifecycle. The special needs bus area is somewhere that still needs detention, so we might have to make a purchase of a few regardless of if we can utilize a grant fund or not. We'll kind of cross the bridge as we get there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So let's move us to the public participation portion. So anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. That's okay.
Hi. My name is Tim Hickey. I'm a Paintsville Township resident. I'm also a full-time engineer with seventeen years of experience in piping, expansion, compensation, seismic control, and hot water heating in the construction industry. The reference that Ms. Grassi made to point out that there's things not, that you can't see going on in a building is a definite highlight to the problem that he pointed out of a cost-cutting measure. I will guarantee you those pipes do not have proper expansion, compensation, or flexible connectors. The result of putting a levy in that's going to clearly fall short are these cost-cutting measures that go into the construction. And it's only people with no experience on the board that have supported this levy. But really, what I want to ask is about the rally meeting that Ms. Grassi organized outside of a full public invite in support of the levy. Does the board present to the public both sides of the issue? I will tell you, because I have current experience, the Concord Fire Stations. I use this as an example. They were putting out for two fire stations. They came in so over budget that they can only build one. I will also use an example from firsthand experience. As Ms. Grassi said, the consultant that gave you guys the numbers for this project was from January of two thousand and twenty-two. Well, hey, tomorrow, March first, there is a thirteen percent material supply increase that nobody in January would have accounted for because I work in that industry directly and I didn't know about it until two weeks ago. I will also point out that our lead times have doubled, doubled, from twelve weeks to twenty-four weeks in the last fifteen days. Now, I knew that lead time was coming. Consultants did not. But again, does the board present it equally, or is it just a rally to only gain support? Because I don't feel like our community is being heard or represented by this board when a board member organizes some sort of event like that that I wasn't invited to. I'm very active. I definitely noticed that the social media pages put up something within thirteen hours of the meeting, the last board meeting, pointing out support or trying to gain traction for this ill-timed, ill-advised levy. The people in this room with twenty-four to sixty, eighty years of construction histories have pointed out the obstacles. It's not about not building a school. It's about putting the levy up at this time that's going to add tax dollars and for the rest of my life, and then going to need another levy. So I would like to see some equal representation. You originally said, hey, we're only putting this up because I promised the voters, but now you're holding rallies for it, Ms. Grassi. Are you giving both sides of the story?
Thank you.
My name is Brian Massey, K one ninety-six Rainbow Drive in Concord Township. I firmly believe that honesty, integrity, and transparency are the keys to good governance and an informed electorate. I come before the school board and administration to express my displeasure at your lack of transparency with the taxpayers of the school district. In communication with the taxpayers, you only stated that there's going to be a five-point-three-seven, five-point-three-seven mil bond levy on the May third ballot. You failed to disclose the facts. The term is for thirty-seven years. The amount is a hundred and forty-seven million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. The interest on the thirty-seven-year bond levy will be between a hundred to a hundred and thirty million dollars. The architects recently increased their project cost from a hundred and thirty-five million, nine hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars to the hundred and forty-seven, seven twenty-five in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. The one forty-seven, seven twenty-five is subject to increase. I looked at the performance of the Riverside School District. During the school year, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, Riverside received a grade of F from the State of Ohio because you only met nine of twenty-four standards. The overall proficiency scores for two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen for all grades and all subjects is seventy-five percent. Of the nine school districts in Lake County, you ranked fourth in proficiency with the seventy-five percent. The proficiency scores are less in similar districts in eleven subjects. That's fifty-two percent. You couldn't even compete with similar districts. And you scored less than the state standard, which is only sixty-five percent in two subjects, algebra and government. The math proficiency scores for high school algebra was fifty-four point five percent, and geometry was sixty-four point four. From two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty, the overall property tax, the annual tax, has increased ten million, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine ninety-three. That's a thirty-five point five percent increase. That's a thirty-five point five percent increase. For the period two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-one, enrollment has dropped by seven-hundred-and-sixty-three students, that's fourteen point seven percent. For the period two thousand eleven versus two thousand twenty-one, the cost per student has increased by four thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents, that's a fifty-eight point nine percent increase. So let me recap for you. You're asking the taxpayers of the Riverside School District to spend up to two hundred and seventy-seven million dollars for two new schools, and your justification is this. Your enrollment is down fourteen point seven percent.
Sorry, we're at three minutes.
You have, you received a F from the state.
Wait, sorry, we're at three minutes.
Give him a little, give him a little more time, would you? Okay? Come on. You know, it's not gonna really impact the length of the meeting. You give a guy a reasonable amount of time to talk.
No, it's fine. We have the three-minute public participation we announced.
My name's Scott Graham, ten twenty-three Madison Avenue. I would like to yield as much of my time that Mr. Massey needs to finish, just going over these numbers that are very important for all of us to see or hear.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
May I take that time?
That's Scott's time.
Yes.
Your enrollment is down fourteen point seven over ten years. You received a F from the state for not meeting their standards. Your average proficiency scores for all grades in subjects is seventy-five percent. You're spending fifty-eight one, ninety-one percent more per student than twenty-one versus two thousand eleven, and you've now introduced responsive classroom teaching to introduce equity into the schools, which will take the lowering of the standards because you're gonna have less time to spend on the academics. I'm requesting that the school start to think about the three Rs again, as opposed to this social justice that you're, you have not demonstrated that we should support. I spent eight thousand dollars in the sixteen years that I've lived in this township. So all we're doing is producing average students, and you want us to spend more money to produce average students. It's not acceptable. So when you have a meeting in March and April, make sure you tell the complete story of your performance, please. Thank you.
Thank you, fellow township. You can back over, we did go over. You're using scores from two thousand eighteen. The scores from this past year.
Just because this is a public participation.
Yeah, I know. I would like to, I'd like to point some things out, though. Performance index, we were second in the county to performance index. Oh, the only one that scored better than us in performance index was Kirtland. We had eighty-three point nine as opposed to Kirtland's ninety point nine. In terms of the state report card in the areas of algebra, government, history, biology, English, language arts, and geometry, in the county, in algebra one, we were third at the high school. Government, we were eighth. History, we were five. Biology, we were three. E L A, English Language Arts, we were three, and we were fifth in geometry. For again, the total performance index at the high school, we were third out of the nine schools. The only ones scoring higher than us were Kirtland and Perry. Okay?
Can I, can you share that with Mr. Massey?
Well, it's, you can look at it, it's on the October video from our school. Improving Students at Risk readers were the highest out of the nine school districts. So I, I, I'm not sure why we're using data from four years ago, but there's more current data.
I'd like to know why I didn't get a response to my question, but Mr. Massey gets a direct response from the speaker.
I was correcting, though. I was putting out some scores from, that are more recent, that's all.
He's using older data for his references, or we're using the data that's current from now.
Okay, I just want to go back to the public participation. Is there any other public participation?
Yes, please. I'm probably not here for this, I'm here for, so if I could just take a minute, and I'm gonna read something really quick, I have permission to share this. My name, I'm sorry, my name is Jessica Nagy. I have two students in the district, an eighth grader at this campus and a third grader. Then I'm gonna leave because I'm not here for this. I'm here for part of the mental health, and a crisis is happening on this campus. I'm not gonna read this whole, whole thing because it's very difficult for me. I have permission from my best friend to share this. To whoever finds this, I'm sorry, but this world isn't for me. I can't do it anymore. I am done. To those who cared, I'm sorry. To those who said that I was gonna kill myself or the constant harassment, saying I'm worthless or should die, well, you win. I'm sorry to my friends, I'm sorry to my family. I hated most of everyone. The only people who are allowed to cry are Paisley, Cassidy, Anna, Ella, Michaela, Helena, Michaela, my mom, my dad, Tony, my siblings, my close friends and family, and finally Sarah G. I'm not gonna say their names because they're students here. And she goes on to say more. This is from a fifteen-year-old that goes here, my best friend's daughter, who's currently in hospital now, who tried to commit suicide on Friday. While you all are here talking about numbers and C R T and banning books, I don't know if you're all aware of what is happening at this building every day. The fights, there was one today, a kid had to go to the hospital. The racial slurs. My daughter's bi-racial, she hears this every day, she's being called an N-word with the hard R. Mr. Fishel, it's a problem. It's a crisis problem. The seven fights last week were because of the racial slurs, were because of child pornography being out. I hope you know that. Every day, these kids are being harassed and bullied, and my best friend's daughter tried to commit suicide on Friday, and she's at Rainbows right now. This was her suicide note. And you guys want to sit on your hoity-toity desks, roll up your sleeves and see what's going on at this campus. It's not about the numbers. These kids are in crisis here. This is every day, folks. Every day, there's [inaudible] fight. I'm sorry, and my time is up, and I'm going to leave, but you need to be aware of what's happening at this school every day. Please pray for my dau, my best friend's daughter. Thank you. Please carry on with your budgets. I'm going to go home and check up my best friend and her daughter.
Any other public participation today?
My name is Al Adams. I live in Leroy Township. I also, I know my clock started, but the one thing I've seen in these board meetings is the board responding and answering questions during the meeting, which I didn't see happening, maybe there's, because there's more people, but I have two issues. The first is, I'm curious if the school board is aware of the admissions policy change at Auburn Career Center, where they went from a interview process, transcripts, referrals, a standard process to a lottery, a standard lottery. The best in my research, not one of the ten districts were notified. It was unilateral decision that was made over there. I'd love to be corrected if I'm wrong and find out if there was participation, but if there doesn't appear to be. And if they didn't, you didn't know about it, is there, excuse me, any interest in stepping in and voicing your opinion on that one way or the other? The other question is, is regards to these meetings, and I'm not gonna lecture you on the levy or anything else, too bad, but who's in charge of the social media for the schools, for the Facebook and the Twitter? Because I'll just add to what Tim said, the levy issue went up the next morning for the school. I just went back on there, sitting here, and tried to find notification on those medias for a school board meeting, and I couldn't find one. I saw posts for after the meeting and what might have happened, but the one thing I see when I post that I come to these meetings are people saying, oh, please remind me next time. Now, I'm sure that there's something in the bylaws that says you have to put it in the newspaper, because we know in two thousand twenty-two, that's what everybody's reading. But why doesn't somebody take the initiative to post on the school page when these meetings are? So maybe there would be a better public participation, I pray, and maybe more people would come and be informed instead of just making one-sided decisions themselves based on what they see their friends or family or somebody post, because that's the real goal. The goal of these people here, they're informing themselves. You know how big your district is, this isn't enough people. This isn't enough people. So you could do some little things to help inform them on when the meetings are. They follow the school page, oh, look, there's a school board meeting, I'm gonna go. Nobody's cracking open the paper, you know, they're not. Not that it has kids in this school, more than likely. And then just also to put numbers behind, that I double-checked these numbers, what he's talking about, the percentage increase, my first question is, what was the number that they raised the original estimate to? Because the actual numbers for the fire station, and I confirmed this with trustees over there, they figured eight million dollars for the one fire station, they're one point eight million dollars over that budget right now, which is twenty-two and a half percent increase. And that just happened. So that's, that's a real statistic locally of something that just happened. And I'll.
Thank you.
I'll stop.
Any others about public participation?
Go ahead. Josh Pollak, I have two daughters in the district, and kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Adams had mentioned is, I agree, we haven't seen much in terms of really looking at where we're at as a community in the time of the world that we're living in, where our economy has been crumbling and costs have been skyrocketing, and how can you adjust for increases in all avenues, like timelines and increase in costs? And you're expecting us as a community to want to foot that bill? And knowing that we've, you guys had already made a decision without informing us as taxpayers for this district about critical race theory program. There is not a critical, there is not a race issue in this district, as far as I can tell. My daughters hang out with all races and creeds, and I feel like a lot of what is happening with the divisiveness of trying to keep everybody divided, critical race theory is gonna definitely continue to add to that, which then puts a bigger toll on to your discussion about children's mental health. This whole divisive world we're living in is a big mess for the kids growing up in this world, and that's what has me upset, because I've had to deal with it in my own home for two very well-adjusted children that are excelling in school but struggling with their emotions and dealing with friends that are battling all kinds of problems. Everybody needs a label nowadays because of programs like critical race theory. It's unjust, it makes no sense. We, we have all, we have, my, my daughters have friends that are identifying now as a boy, previously a girl, they have friends that are of African-American, and I have other things to even mention on that, too. But they get along fine. You know, they have a nice, strong network, they're in marching band, but this mental, mental health is a real problem right now, and we need to be focused on what we can do to help the kids and look for programs that continue to divide them and push them into isolation with anxiety and not being accepted. We need to be looking at programs that bring people together and not looking at ways to wedge people. I don't have a whole lot more to say, but I just have seen a lot. My daughters know of two children that have committed suicide since last year. My daughter went to prom with a gal that committed suicide, and then over the Christmas holiday, the young man that took his life on a cruise ship, lived in our neighborhood and was a friend of my daughter. So yeah, we've had to deal with a lot of it, too, so her lashing out makes, I understand, but it's, everybody's dealing with it. It's called getting involved and being a parent.
Thank you. Can you give us one more?
Yeah, my name's Chris Weis. I live in Leroy Township. Two students in the high school, one at Parkside Elementary. I got three things I want to try to cover in the three minutes. Number one, I'm against this S E L learning, okay? Critical race theory and any derivative thereof, you know, social issues, religion, those kinds of things, that's my job to teach in my home, it's not your job to teach, and I do not defer that to you guys to do, okay? So I'd like to see that go away completely. Second thing, discipline and dress code in the school. Last fall before the board elections, I attended a public meeting and brought it up with two of the school board members who were seated at that time. I got called a sexist misogynist for bringing up the fact that although this school district has a dress code that is printed and is supposed to be abided by, although there have been multiple school emails and newsletters sent out reminding the students to include that when they had the letter ceremony over here in the field house, that that was a professional attire event and the students were put on notice to dress appropriately, they don't, okay? And even though it is still wintertime and it's twenty-some-odd degrees going to school, you still have many students, both females and males, violating that dress code. This goes to the problem of discipline in the school, okay? My two sons that are in the high school, freshmen and sophomores, they have entirely A P and honors classes, okay? So on that note, in their classroom, things go pretty well. The kids that are in those classes want to be there to learn. My children don't go into the bathrooms during school, okay? Not, it's not that they're afraid they're gonna get their ass kicked in the bathroom, but because of what goes on in these bathrooms. Smoking, bullying, tearing up the bathrooms. I instruct my kids, if you see a group of kids doing something they don't, they're not supposed to be doing, don't be there, okay? So when I say that my kids are afraid to go in the bathroom, again, it's be, they don't want to be in a place where when someone does try to crack down on the discipline, that they're caught up in something that they were not involved in, okay? You had six fights last week, six or seven, there's a kid. I don't think that has a lot to do with the fact that the kid is constantly involved in fights. My sons have told me this occurs on a daily basis. The students are also blockading bathrooms and are openly defiant to the teachers, and the teachers tell me, I spoke to ten of eleven of my students' teachers last week at student teacher conferences, and they all tell me that it is out of control in this school, that when they send a kid to the office, the kids either don't go or they come back with a note during the same class period time. The teachers do not feel that the faculty is supporting them in managing this problem, and it's only getting worse. And if I could, if I could ask for the remainder of Scott's time, one last thing I'd like to close the loop on here, okay? With regard to this school levy, okay, we're not against providing our children the very best possible education and resources to learn, okay? But we don't support this levy to spend what with debt service will be nearly three hundred million dollars, okay? It's, you don't, you don't start a construction project without even so much as a sketch of what you're gonna build and then say, here, write us a blank check and we'll let you know what we're gonna build later, okay? That's just, that's just insane. And so, you know, and I want to say this, too, I have a huge investment in this school district, okay? This is my father's diploma. He graduated June nineteen fifty-two, the first class out of Riverside, okay? Anybody wants to come and look at this? Bears the original ink signatures of John R. Williams, Lamuth, Clyde Haden, and Neville at Hazen, okay? I graduated nineteen eighty-three from this school. My ex-wife, my, my kids' grandparents, all their cousins, we're in our fourth generation of this family coming to this school, okay? I've invested my life here in my businesses, my home, and my property, okay? I've paid a ton of property taxes, more than probably most people because of the other business ventures I have in this district, okay? So I do care. We want to partner with the school board to help get to where we need to be with the resources, with the infrastructure, the edifice that will sustain this school district, okay? We do not believe that what you, what the three-to-two decision is going for is gonna succeed, okay? We know it's going to fail. I have thirty-seven years of construction management experience, I hold advanced degrees in engineering and business management. We have a gentleman sitting to my left who worked on the construction of the perinuclear power plant, had discussions with him, okay? You cannot launch a project like this with no idea of what you're ultimately going to build and tie yourself in to a particular number when you have thirty-seven years of debt service, when you have, in three years, you're gonna have to get a renewal on your operating levy, and when you're already looking at a ten percent pay cut from the state, when you're already at the state floor of five percent funding, okay? This is ludicrous. Lastly, I want to say that we want, our side wants access to the school. Lastly, I want to say that we want, our side wants access to the school website to post our side of the issues. We want to come and to the meetings that you're holding. I believe that Ms. Grassi and, or Mrs. Grassi and the other females that are involved in these meetings may be violating the sunshine laws. And if we find out that that's true, we're gonna follow up on it, okay? I'd also like to have a public debate where we can bring several of our people to debate your side of the issue in front of the public and so that they are completely and fully informed about the ramifications of what they're about to vote on on May third. Thank you.
That brings us to our consent agenda portion of the meeting. Finance and audit consent agenda?
Sure. We have a motion to approve the items listed on finance and audit consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer, items A through H. Can I have a second?
A second.
I just want to thank the individuals for the donations that are in item H. We have a hundred dollars from 1922 Coffee and Brew to the Drama Club, and we have five hundred dollars from GCXs, uh, GCXC, sorry, Northern Ohio Volunteers to the Riverside High School National Honor Society, so thank you to them. Is there any other discussion on any of these agenda items? Can we call the roll, Mr. Plackton?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Philip Grassi?
Aye.
Laura Wiskie?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda for personnel?
Sure. We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent, items A through G. Have a second?
Sure, a second.
So any discussion on any of these items? Not, can we call the roll?
Philip Grassi?
Aye.
Laura Wiskie?
Aye.
Tom Henn?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda for curriculum and programming?
Yeah, it's, I'm happy to do it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so motion to approve the items A through D on the curriculum and programming. Consent agenda is recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Fishel, any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Laura Wiskie?
Aye.
Tom Henn? Excuse me, aye?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Laura Wiskie?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda for buildings and grounds and operations?
Motion to approve the items listed on buildings and grounds. Consent agenda, items A through E. It's recommended by the superintendent. Is there a second?
A second?
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All right, can you call the roll, please?
Tom Henn?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Philip Grassi?
Aye.
Laura Wiskie?
Aye.
Motion carried. Board of Education update.
We'd just like to invite the public to come and attend the drama production this weekend.
Anything else? All right, so motion to adjourn to executive session at 8:19 PM. Can I have a second? Just discuss security arrangements?
So can we call the roll, please?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Philip Grassi?
Aye.
Laura Wiskie?
Aye.
Tom Henn?
Aye.
Motion carried.